Welcome, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Put some eyes on, so I can see what I'm doing. So, approval of the agenda, moved by Carson Massey and seconded by Margaret Fancy that council approved the agenda. All in favor? Declaration of interest. Anybody have a declaration of interest? None? Moved through number four, approval of the minutes. So moved by Margaret Fancy and seconded by Gail Williams that council approved the minutes of the committee, the whole public works meeting, and the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated November 3rd, 2025. Any questions or comments on those? No? All in favor? And out to the good part. Miss... Oh, I missed it. No, all right. I am. I'm getting... Yeah. I've been slipping for a long time. Moved by Carson Massey and seconded by Gail Williams that council approved the accounts payable report dated November 14th in the amount of $141,933.22. Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor? Now to the good part. Miss Smith, come please... Please, yeah, please come up to the... Yeah, so they can... So people can hear you on... You can turn that mic, push that microphone button on there, please.
There you go. Ain't no lying now.
Thank you for coming and... And thanks for additional information, so go ahead.
I even have more additional information, but it occurs to me as a certified Dill Carnegie instructor that before I ask you what I'm gonna ask you, I should let you know that I moved to Mallory Town two years ago and thank you for this lovely town and this beautiful area, well-run, organized, ordered. I love it. I'm so happy I moved here. Like, I wake up happy every day, so thank you. I assume you have something to do with it. So, my name is Rita Smith. I live at number 42, County Road 5. Honestly, you could almost spit there. My property is unusual because it's a division of 44, which is in the front. A lot of people don't even know I'm back there. They call my house Dan's Trailer. It used to be the Roy Family Trailer, which has been just lovingly tended to, and now I live there. So, the reason that I am here tonight, after two years of pulling down the rock-cut driveway to pull onto County Road 5 winter and summer, is because it occurs to me that traffic there moves really fast. The speed limit is 80 kilometers an hour, and I personally have almost been wiped out, partly because my driveway's so hidden, partly because it's just too fast for where the road is there. I've personally almost been completely wiped out. The worst near miss was an OPP vehicle, which had no idea, I think, that there was even a driveway there. He had no rollers or siren on, so I didn't know he was coming, and he was going way faster than 80 kilometers an hour. He might have been chasing a drug dealer or something across the river, I don't know, but he was moving really fast and really... It's such a blind corner, not just for me, but for all of my neighbors. And I did speak to everybody immediately around me before coming tonight, and they all just thought this was the most brilliant idea, and they didn't know why they didn't think of it sooner before I moved here two years ago. So, I'm here to ask you if it is possible, if there is a way, to reduce the speed limit on County Road 5 from 80 to 60 kilometers an hour, keeping in mind that people don't drive 80, like, they drive 100. You know, they drive way faster than 80. The OPP sure does. And cars coming up from the Parkway do as well, so it's really fast on County Road 5, which is enough of a problem just for me pulling out. I'm pretty... I still got my wits about me. It's all good. I have a big car. Think I can make it okay. But where Jones Creek Trailhead is, that hikers and families go to get onto the trail there, it's... People are still going 80 or 100 miles an hour, and I have seen families, like literally, stand their kids on the shoulder of the road while they get their hiking equipment out of the back of the car, and vehicles are going by way faster than 80. Even 80 is too fast, but way faster than 80. As a mother and a grandmother, it just stops my heart to see those kids standing on the shoulder of the... Ahhh! I can barely even look. I can barely even look. It was actually just like dumb luck that Parks Canada knocked on my door in October to politely inform me that they're building a little parking lot there. Everybody here is aware of that, right? Though I think it's like a little six-car, eight-car parking lot that is gonna go there at the trailhead, and the fellow who came spoke to me, Sheldon Lambert, I said, "Sheldon, this would be, you know, really a great time for you to get behind the idea that that highway, County Road 5, should be slower, not just for me pulling out of my driveway, or Dan, or Bob from Bob Sand and Gravel, or John and Sue, but for the families that are gonna be going into Jones Creek hiking. It's just not safe. The people are now gonna be pulling in and out of a parking lot with cars going by at 80. It's not safe." So Sheldon said, "That's a great idea. We support that fully," he told me. "We would support that fully. That's a great idea." So I said, "Okay, I'm gonna see what it takes," and he suggested that I call one clerk, and that clerk told me to call the other clerk, and so here I am. I talked to all my neighbors. They all thought it was a great idea. Dan Roy, who owns 44 in front of me, he owns a property right at the front of Thousand Islands Parkway at Lansdowne, and he said they already did that in Lansdowne. They're already down to 60, and he supports it fully. Sheldon, I spoke to last week, and he said, "Rita, we cannot give you a letter of support because it's a pre-budget period, and as a former government employee, I get it. You can't do anything that makes anybody look good during the pre-budget period." He said, "We can't give you a letter at this point in time. Hopefully, in the future, we could give you a letter." He didn't rescind his verbal conversation where he would fully support it, but he can't put it in writing right now. He said, "However, when you speak to council, you should tell them about the animal kills that we track." And I said, "Oh, that's a number I didn't even have." He said, "We can count on 95 to 100 animal kills per summer." Animal kills mean turtles, which, many of which are rare, and they're trying their best to save rat snakes, which we need, right? Because they eat the rodents. Deer, obviously, and I just spoke to a lady today whose husband got wiped out by deer on County Road 5. I almost hit a family of three deer myself last year. I was only going like 60, though, so it was okay. I didn't hit them. But Sheldon says 95 to 100 per summer, that's standard every year, okay? And that when the election is over, he would like to put that in writing in a letter as soon as his job would let him do that, okay? So between just the families and the animals and the speed, and then, of course, me, I have my own selfish self-interest in this, and general safety, as Dan has pointed out, they've already done in Lansdowne. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that Mallory Town consider and do whatever it would take to get the speed limit reduced from 80 to 60, especially as that parking lot is going in for families to use.
So, I want to repeat what your neighbors have said, that it's probably embarrassing that the council here didn't think of the same idea before you did.
No, it's embarrassing that they never came to ask. That's what they say.
No, because what I mean is, in my opinion, it's an excellent idea.
Oh, oh, good. Okay, thank you.
And the Parks Canada is putting a tunnel underneath County Road 5.
A wildlife tunnel.
A wildlife tunnel. You're right about the parking lot, and you're also right about County Road 3 being 60 kilometers an hour. So, it is a county road, so it's not up to us, but we can certainly make the request that they do that, and if we do have support from Parks Canada, it would make it even more. Because the counties are doing it all over. I mean, if you... Some of it may seem excessive. If you drive from here to Prescott on County Road 2, you don't know what the speed limit is. You go anywhere from 80 to 60 to 50 to 40 to 60 to 40 to 50.
Yeah, it changes. Well, you know, if... Not to waste any more of your time, since you already think it's an excellent idea, you should stop selling, right? That's what Dale would tell me. But I have actually pulled out of my driveway onto County Road 5, and you can't go any faster. I can't burn rubber pulling out of that rock-cut driveway onto County Road 5. You can only come up to speed so fast to have a car like wahhh on the tail end of me. I'm going as fast as I can go, and then 20 feet later, there's a sign that says 50. And so we're both like slamming on the brakes. This makes no sense. It just... It just makes no sense. One statistic I failed to give you that was in the letter is I did drive it at 80, and it took 1 minute and 50 seconds, and then I drove it again at 60, and it took 2 minutes and 9 seconds. So for that extra velocity, you save 19 seconds, and then you're at the Thousand Islands Parkway. So like, I think we could all probably, you know, eat the 19 seconds.
So, if council agrees, what we can do is put a resolution together to make a recommendation to county council that the speed limit be reduced from 80 to 60 in that stretch of road.
That'd be awesome.
Go ahead.
I'd like to request a sign, a hidden driveway sign as well, because I know how bad that spot is. It's ridic... And I agree, it's ridiculous the speeds they go. I mean, I don't think I've ever driven over 70 on that road. I mean, you just get up to speed, and you gotta slow down anyway.
You do, yeah, you do. And then the family of three deer come out, like, all three of them together.
We need to make sure that the OPP are policing this area and not letting people drive 100 like they do through the village.
Yeah, yeah.
That's another issue. You're right, Gail.
Good point.
So, the thing is, in reality, by putting it down to 60, we might get them down to 80. Right? And that's the reality, and if the police are there to enforce it, we'll get them down. But again, numbers of OPPs and time commitment, hopefully it'll get them down and make it safer.
Even incrementally, it would have to be better, right? It would have to be better. And if there was like a temporary sign that said like new, you know, 60, or somebody got a ticket, it might alert people to the fact that it was 60.
Maybe a good time to bring up the other thing that would happen. As we've been having problems with speeding throughout the village here for years, and we're in the process of putting out photo radar until the province killed it last week, right? So they came out with a new program to fund... You read it in the papers, you know, the news. They're gonna give municipalities money to put whatever...
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps. So we know here, on this highway speed dump, speed bumps won't work because we have heavy traffic. When the 401 shuts down, this is a 401. They can't. It won't work, right? The county won't put speed bumps out because they said they don't want to be tied up in court all the time because they do damage cars and people.
Yeah.
Try to sue, right?
News and suits.
So, last week, I got this package from the MPP's office saying, "Here's the new program. The funding's been just announced today." This was on Thursday. And apply for this funding to... For this new program, you know, instead of photo radar. Well, this package says that municipalities aren't eligible, and any organization that does apply, it's a co-payment. It's a funding that's co-payment, so shared. You only get part of the funds from the province. And also, the package that was attached said that the applications had to be in, even though the announcement was just made Thursday, the applications had to be in by the end of July of 2025. So I sent it back to the MPP's office this morning saying, "Please, explain this." And anyway, we've been trying to do something with the speeding. Gail mentioned it's an enforcement problem. When the 401 closes down, all the police are required on the 401, right? So there's no one here in the village to enforce the speeding. So there's no extra officers available. So all the trucks and everybody's flying through past the school. Anyway, you're not alone in your concern with the speeding. That's my point, and we're gonna try to do something. But for this piece here, we'll put a resolution together, put it forward to the counties, and see if we can get it done sooner than later.
I would just be eternally grateful, and you've got all my contact information, so if there's anything further that I can provide you with, I'd be so happy to do so. Contact with Sheldon. I understand the budget process. I'd be so happy to do any of that. You know, there are... Speaking as a...
He's a fire chief, so he can speak.
No reporters here or anything, are there?
You're not a reporter.
Speaking as a former staffer in the Doug Ford government who quit because I couldn't stand the lying and the incompetence.
You're being taped, you know.
I feel for you with getting packages like this. That is like so par for the course. How municipalities, like you are putting up with them? Like, I quit over the Amazons. I... Don't even get me started. It's really unfortunate that you have to put up with stuff like that, where they offer you money, and they had a press conference, and they cut a ribbon, and everybody kissed their feet, and then it's like, well, no, the deadline's already passed, but forget that. There... That's okay, Doug. There are creative things that can be done with OPP cars that aren't, you know, on the road with an officer in them. Like, you could park one outside the school. They've done that in the past, right? There is... There are things that can be done that don't actually take police resources, but that takes some creativity. Maybe Steve Clark could help with that.
Well, I have to say, when we call them, they do the best they can to get here, but they're not always available, so...
Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe they have a car they could park outside the school for a week or something.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Thank you for your kind response, and I feel great. Nice to meet all of you. And again, congratulations on the beautiful, beautiful, beautiful little term. I really do love it.
Thanks. Well, that we are gonna record. All right, having said that, Chief, you're up.
Good evening. October was pretty quiet as far as calls go. Just to put some context, from the 7th to the 12th of November, we had eight calls. So, we have as many already in November as we had in all October. Eight calls in five days. So, we were fairly busy. We did do Fire Prevention Week in October. Had 130 children come to school, and Janet Mitchell did a good job entertaining them with some fire safety tips and videos, and of course, they all received a goodie bag of fire prevention items. Always well responded by the school. It was a crappy day, too. It was pouring rain. The kids still managed to get down there. It was not very nice. We hit 100 calls on the 27th, and we ended up, right now, we're at 110. You see the total hours of the year, so our hours as far as the honorams ended at October 31st, so we were at 2910.
Question for you, sir. On your active list, we see a lot of medical assist calls. When you break down the hours, there's nowhere in there where it says medical assist, so where do you put those hours under?
They were suppression.
Under suppression. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, where they went under.
Yeah, it's like an emergency call. So, that or...
Could you break that out and make a medical assist hour so we can track that separately from suppression? So that we see... Because for me, suppression is fighting a fire.
Well, suppression could be a car accident, too. It could be a public assist. It could be medical. It could be lots of things. Any emergency call could be that. So it's not just suppression. Well, I could. I think you create another column in my spreadsheet, because now it breaks it down. When the members put their hours in, it's either suppression, training, maintenance, or fire prevention. So, four spaces. But I can keep a separate log of how many medical, how many hours we had in that.
That may be useful as far as the paramedics being over there.
Yeah, they haven't been much asset to us.
No, with the medical assist.
Show that we're still responding to those medical assists.
And we still will, because we don't have a full ambulance there. It's only a first responder, one person. So no matter what call we get, we're still going.
Yeah, but the point of putting it there in the first place was to reduce the response times. So if you guys are still going, that's great, but if they're there two or three minutes before you, then that's a reduction in the response time.
But unfortunately, they're never there when we get calls. We've only gotten one call with a person from the office. They've been deployed somewhere else.
Okay, well, we gotta keep an eye... They're keeping an eye on. They're tracking it.
They had one call. They said in there that we've actually gone with them.
But I know the chief paramedic is keeping track of them, because it's a new program in Westport, Athens, here and here, so, and Merrickville.
So I'm not trying to make more work for the firefighters when they're logging in, but if you can maybe track when you're looking at it, and so we can get a number of how many medical assist hours we're actually doing.
So, yeah, okay, I can do that, Carson, yeah. But yeah, well, no matter what, though, even though he's there, or he or she is there, we're still going with them.
Well, that's good.
Because it's only one person.
Yeah, that's good.
So, we always... We thought when we put a unit there, our call line would drop because they would go, but it's not making any difference.
Well, it has made a difference in Athens and Westport, so hopefully, as it pans out... They've only been there a couple of months, so as it pans out, they've knocked four minutes off in Athens and Westport.
One or 20 minutes is not gonna make a big difference anyway, right, in a call?
No, going from 17 minutes down to 14 or 15 minutes, well, or 13 minutes. Anyway.
I begged you, Jennifer. So we did get that main panel changed in the hall, and so I said that you have five spots on that that are burnt that had small arc fires that started, so we're glad that we got that fixed. You see the training for October with medical and pump ops, SCBA doning the office, and new members' equipment checks. So we have... Our new members are now responding to most of the calls. We're not allowing them to respond to the 401 yet. We are having Constable Kevin Lammercraft come in on the 2nd to do a kind of 401 safety session and scene responsibility, placement of trucks, scene, keeping the scene safe, keeping all the evidence safe, and that kind of note-taking. So, once they get that, then they'll be able to respond with us, too, as well.
Is he doing it on his OPP time?
I believe so.
Good, okay, because he's retired and coming back.
We originally asked for Rob, and Rob was teaching a course somewhere else in North Bay at that time, so Rob just did one in Leeds, and it was well-received there, too. So we guess a number of trains coming up. Jen's going to a countywide fire investigator course in November. We got three members that are gonna attend the ZED course in November in Maitland, and there are five members who are taking the pump ops course or doing the actual physical and assessment down in the Morseburg on the 6th. So, that'll give us five new pump operators, and we have three going in early 2026 for the fire instructor course. We had an airline installed on number 25, so we plug the air compressor into it, so it keeps the brakes up. Our old tanker two was the same thing. You go in there and think, no matter what you do, try to find air leaks, it would be dead. And you have to sit there and let it run for five minutes to build the air up. So now the air is right at the top all the time. We did purchase a new D-Fib. One of the current ones, and I don't know why, but the supplier in Sands Medical doesn't know either, just stopped making the pads and batteries for it, so it's been defunct. So the D-Fib was $3,500, but the Lynn Lodge had given the association $2,000 back in the early part of the summer as donation. So the association donated that $2,000 back to help pay for that D-Fib. So, I let the lodge know what we did with it, because they asked to know what we spent the money on, and it was like medical emergencies or emergency equipment, and so it met their criteria, so they were happy with that. And under the fire prevention, again, we had the pub ed at the Ag event, the Fire Prevention Week. We had a fire drill at the school as well, and Mitchell also reviewed the fire safety plan at the school. There were some changes that needed to be made in that as well.
So, going to these safety checks for the vehicles, I was told that Athens had their emergency vehicle taken off the road for a safety check, but it was replaced by a donation from Dupont.
Oh, really?
From Erin Vista, yeah. Because Vista's shutting down, so they're getting rid of something. Yeah, so they donated an emergency vehicle.
Oh, it was a rescue. They rescued it.
Rescue vehicle, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was the same thing as our tankers. Double C channel frame and the separation of the rest.
So, yeah, so Vista donated...
I'm surprised you get it in the hall. That's a big unit. I'm surprised. They get it in Athens. It's a pretty small hall.
Anyway, so it's pretty nice. Everybody's helping out. Okay, any other questions or... No?
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. He's... Yeah, south, I guess, or... Yeah. So moved by Gail Williams, seconded by Margaret Fancy. The council accepted their fire report 11-25. All in favor? Carries. Okay. Jennifer.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Do any members of council have questions on my report, items 1 through 6? Just directives from the last meeting. Moving on to item 7, I met with our agent with respect to the 2026 group benefit renewal, and wonderful news, the renewal came in at 7.5% less than the 2025 rates. Yes, it's very nice.
For a change?
Yes, and I have further good news on the insurance front. Our municipal policy has gone down by 1% over last year. So there's some more savings there. However, our agent is recommending that we consider adding to our insurance portfolio cyber insurance policy. So, we are seeing approximately $1,000 savings over last year, but the minimum policy for a million-dollar coverage is $2,265. But staff is recommending that we add that.
I think we should, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And then the action plan has just been... It can be removed now, but we just wanted to close off the ASAP plan that it has been completed.
That's good. That's a lot of work.
It's nice to have that done.
Did you ever get your answers in regards to why the equipment is rated where it was rated?
And I did speak to him about that. Actually, I do have the answer to that. So, the plan, he recommends an annual update at the end of every year. So, the inventory that is listed right now does not include new for 2025. So, it shows the old tankers. It shows the trail before it got renovated. All of that will be put into the plan effective December 31st of this year.
Okay, so...
So those numbers will like instantly change in a matter of weeks.
Good, but he was talking about equipment.
Yes, so it was just some of it, 15% of it, which were the two tankers and the blue pickup truck.
Okay, because equipment, to me, is everything from a jackhammer to a...
Yeah, I think there was some small fire equipment that I'm gonna ask Greg about, but it wasn't... Yeah, I don't have the email in front of me, unfortunately, but I can share it with you, his exact response.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll copy everyone on that.
Okay, get a motion on that first, that first part. So moved by Margaret Fancy, seconded by Carson Massey. The councils accept the admin report 35-25. Report to council. All in favor? Carries. Now we're on to...
I just have a question. Jennifer, the last meeting, the presentation they did on the Parks and Recreation, the presentation that they did, can we get copies of what they had here? Because we didn't get those. Would you please, and just put it in my mail slot? Thank you.
That was the council, like, that was the condensed version, correct?
And the next item is the wage classification update, and what's in the package is just an overview of the categories. We don't name the employees themselves during these discussions. the, the employees themselves during these, during these discussions, so, uh, it's just a proposal at this point. So Jennifer, you wanna, because I, I have a bunch of comments, I think others do too, so go, you walk it through it first.
For sure. So, um, staff were just hoping to have a, a proposal or an accepted plan in place for the, um, cost of living and an update to the salary grid in, in time for the January 1st, um, turnover rather than waiting for the budget process, and it seemed that when we checked with a lot of the other municipalities, they also just have a, a, a policy in place that it's, it's accepted before the budget. So the proposed grid that's in the package has been restructured to include five levels for each grade, as requested, I think it was earlier this year, um, to remove or to reduce from the seven existing levels down to five. And, uh, then there's just an explanation about the 4% COLA, um, reviewing the national inflation rate and the projected annual rate, while also taking into consideration the need to, um, maintain consistency with neighboring municipal grids from the surrounding area. And then when we did review, um, grids, existing grids of municipalities in Leeds and Granville, we were informed that a few of them had already undertaken a compensation and organizational formal third-party review within the last year or two, so that at least we are confident we're being consistent with the proposed, um, changes to the grid.
Right, so, um, maybe I'll start the conversation? So, yeah, we did, we did ask for, um, uh, you know, a review of the, of the, the different levels, um, and, uh, that's what, that's what's been done, but I, I, I'm struggling with the, it, it's not consistent the way it was applied. For example, level six, uh, begins, the new level six begins at level five. And if you, if you're looking, I can help you look this way. So if looking at the old wage scale, so level.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So it starts at one.
Yeah.
Then when you go to the level, the grid number, or position number, grade five, it starts at level two.
Yeah, so I think it was just in comparison to the equal positions in other municipalities.
Okay, and then, because, and so you see they're all on the map, right, so level four begins at level three, or grid, grade number four.
Right, so those two were removed.
And, yeah, so, and so on and so on, so they're all, there's no consistency on the, where it was applied.
Not compared to ours? No, not compared to ours from previous years, but from those that were polled.
So my, my view, when I, when I, when we were talking about this earlier, that the first two levels would be eliminated only.
Oh, okay.
That's, that was my understanding, it was just the first two levels. Now, I also provided everyone with the, the current, um, CPI, Consumer Price Index, so the CPI today, actually, the one I printed out was released, you see, I highlighted it there, released, uh, November 17th, it's up 2.2% over last year, and it's actually down in September. And if you go to the next page, Ontario rose 2.4%.
Right.
Okay, over last year. And that was, that was as of today, so that was just for, food for thought if we're looking at any type of increase. Um, and I think the consistency on the way we apply the changes, uh, and I do have, it doesn't matter, somewhere, um, the county's wage grid in comparison. Now, I know this is hard to compare because they're looking at 500 employees and a, you know, $60 million budget, so it's hard, hard to, but looking at some of the, uh, positions, um, we're pretty, we're pretty close to what they're paying them now. So I think we, uh, and then, oh, the other piece, not to, not to forget ourselves, council and, and the mayor, is we did a, a, a comparison for consideration for the 2023 to 2026 term of council, for various mayors and, and council, and front of young, uh, came in, a four dollar, we're hit by population. So we're, we're paying me $4.60 per person in the, in the, in the township. And the only two higher than that are Ganonakwe, which is $5.39 per person, and Westport is $18.72 per person.
Is that something we did?
No, that's what the county did.
Oh, I see. Oh, back in 2022.
We were doing a consideration, right, so it's, it's changed a wee bit, so, that's just, just food for thought on, on how we're being, you know, and, and Athens is way low, but, but Athens gets paid per meeting, so it doesn't show, it's in addition to what their usual honorarium is, plus, 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 right? So, because Athens and us are about, about the same. So putting it all together, I think there's more work to be done on this, and, um, as far as putting it in place before January 1st, there's a lot of townships, a lot of municipalities that are unionized, and I would say.
Yeah, we asked for non-unionized.
Yeah, because about a third of them have to be negotiated, right? So they may not get the increases until June or July or August, whatever that is done next year. So retroactive pay is, is needed, it's needed, but I think, um, and I, I'd let everybody else talk, but I think we should just, uh, do those, go back to the, you know, look at, just removing the first two page grids, see when that may be implemented to, to provide consistency, right, on how it's being applied, because it's not consistent here.
Well, no, um, it might not be compared to our old grid, but it is when we reviewed other municipal grids.
Yeah, okay.
So you just want us to pull from ours last year.
I think just remove the first two grids and take it from there, but at the same time, we gotta, uh, think about this during our budget discussions, right? So we are not gonna do this right away, we, uh, it'll be during, our budget was beginning early January, so who wants to begin, Carson?
When I look at this, the grade number five for the new one, the tops go down. Like, if you look at the top of number seven for five, and then look at what they've got for the top now, that's a minus. Fifty-two, ninety-two down to fifty, right? So there's no place to, for growth, it's the same as number four drops down, the level, no, the level stays the same, so there's no room for growth in either one of those grids. So when you're looking at it, I know you're, I know they're looking at the neighboring townships, but for our employees, if there's no initiative for growth, if they're already at the top and we're doing a new grid, and they're staying at the top, but everybody else has room to grow, I think there should be room for growth in there.
Well, that's, that's normal, I think, in, in many places, that, I, you get, we're talking about five levels here, when I was working, we had two levels. So, so after two years, you're stuck, you're there, you're at the top, you don't go any further, you, you just, you just get your percentage increases, right? So eventually, somewhere down the road, if you're gonna be here a million years, you're gonna be at that top level.
The grade number five is going back, it's going less than what they're, what they're getting right now.
Yeah, so I think we should look at the consistency, but at the same time, um, if we knock those first two off, they'll be, they'll, uh, make it a little bit easier to, to move through the, the grid, but I, I hear what you're saying, Carson.
So perhaps going back to the beginning and then just knock the two off?
I'm, I'm thinking that's a good place to start, and I, and I'm also thinking that 4% is too high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a tough budget this year, so.
Well, especially, I mean, I'm, I'm a true believer in not sticking with the, the actual cost of living, yeah, Consumer Price Index, because you can't get ahead, you know, if you just, if you're at two, CPI is 2%, you only give a 2% raise, you're not gonna get it, you're not gonna get ahead, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that's, that's fair, but at the same time, we can't be, you know, going too far, right?
That's true, it's quite consistent.
Yeah. So anyway, I think there's enough there to, to begin with, we'll go back to the drawing board, so to speak.
And then just bring this back.
At, uh, at budget time?
Yeah.
Is that fair, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and Gail has already said it, it's, it's going to be a, a tough budget year, I think, uh, lots of, of challenges, and we need to factor all that in, so to make this decision ahead of time, I don't think is prudent, especially with all the recommended changes, we just can't do it before.
Okay, well, thanks for putting, everybody putting that together, we asked that you work on it, and you did, and that's a good, a good start, I'll, and I think that historically, and you two can help me out, but we, we historically waited till the counties got their wage increase, and we followed suit with them.
Yeah.
And that's what we did before. And that, this wage grid that I have here is their 2025 non-union wage grid, so I can compare that, help you compare that, I'll give you, sort it out.
Yeah, I think we have.
All right, okay. All right, good. So, well, uh, there's an actual motion here, but we're gonna defer their table, right?
Well, if we table it, then it needs to come back on every meeting and agenda until it's dealt with.
Okay, so what, just, we just pull it?
So maybe we could, um, council's still accepting my report, you're not approving it, you're just accepting it, so how about we change the second line there that just says, and that council directs staff to revisit this at budget time?
Do, with further.
Or further review during budget deliberations, or?
Well, we can't approve the wage salary classification grid, we can't, the way it is, we can't approve that.
So you're just accepting my report?
Right.
Yeah, and then changing that second line.
So we, we're approving that council accept the report update, the wage salary classification update, and that further review will be done during our budget deliberations. Is that what I, yeah. So read it, moved by Carson Massey, second by Margaret Fancy, the council accept the report 36-25 concerning the wage salary classification update, and that further review will be done during the budget deliberations, right? All in favor? Carrie's. Committee report, Mallory Coach House Committee, moved by Gail Williams, second by Carson Massey, that Mallory Coach House Committee meeting minutes dated October 1st, 2025 be received. You got something to add to it, can, who'd you?
I just wanted to add, uh, for the hours for, uh, October, it's, Donna had 17, but it's 176 is the hours, the total number of hours for the volunteer hours.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it should have been, it should, she was missing the six off the end.
I was wondering, I was gonna ask you about that.
Uh, the other thing, too, I want to make everyone aware of is that there is a presentation going on tonight over at the Coach House and at the community center, uh, given by Bob Greenhorn and Reg Hunt, uh, regarding the Mallory Town Glassworks. They've invited the historical society from Lansdowne, and there's gonna be 35 to 40 people there. Now, they don't think the presentation will start at the community center till about eight or quarter after, so if anyone's interested in going over and just hearing them, so, anyway, that's exciting.
Um, we had a discussion at the last meeting about the decking and staining, and with it being pressure treated, it is recommended that that not be touched for at least two years, um, so we did mention that if we're gonna do staining to make sure that the money's in the budget, and if they're willing to do it, we get it done and keep on top of it. But they did say that because the contractor recommended, because it's pressure treated, not to do anything to, to two years, and maybe not do anything to it at all, watch and see how it goes.
Yeah, watching it is, is key, because I, I, I do mine every three years with the sealer, and it's, it's lasted, it's lasted a long time.
That's why I put that at the end, for you to watch and see how it goes.
The, the other thing I want to bring up, it's sad to, to see that Brian Phillips has passed away. He did a lot of work on that glassworks, uh, project.
It happened because of Brian, he did the research into that, he designed the glassworks room, along with Bob Greenhorn and Reg Hunt, it, uh, he was detrimental in, in the whole thing happening, so we were very sad to hear of his, uh, passing.
So the folks have been a lot of time over there, and we really appreciate it. So moved by Gail Williams, second by Carson Massey, that Mallory Coach House Committee meeting, meeting minutes dated October 1st be received, all in favor? Moved by Margaret Fancy, second by Carson Massey, that a bylaw to authorize a site plan control agreement with regards to lands in concession three, part of lot 19, 105 June Town Road be read a first and second time. All in favor? Carrie's.
A bylaw to authorize a site plan control agreement with regards to lands in concession three, part of lot 19, 105 June Town Road, short way.
Moved by Gail Williams, second by Margaret Fancy, that a bylaw to authorize a site plan control agreement with regards to lands in concession three, part of lot 19, 105 June Town Road be read a third and final time, numbered as bylaw 46-25, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with a corporate seal and engrossed in the bylaw book. Jennifer, talk to us.
Yes, so this is an existing property who, that has been considered industrial for many years now, however, it's never been properly, um, it's never had a proper site plan control on the property, and so when the owner came, um, to the municipality a few months ago seeking a building permit, it was decided at that time that one would be requested, and no concerns at all, um, he, he's the applicant, the owner has worked with his consultant and our planner throughout the whole process, and this is just formalizing, so we have a proper site plan on, on file. No problems.
Third and final reading, all in favor? Carrie's.
A bylaw to authorize a site plan control agreement with regards to lands in concession three, part of lot 19, 105 June Town Road, short way.
And electronic voting, item number nine-two, moved by Carson Massey, second by Gail Williams, that a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement for electronic voting services with Intellavote Systems Incorporated be read a first and second time. All in favor? Carrie's.
A bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement for electronic voting services with Intellavote Systems, Inc., short way.
And moved by Gail Williams, second by Margaret Fancy, that a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement for electronic voting services with Intellavote Systems Incorporated be read a third, third and final time, numbered as bylaw 47-25, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed with a corporate seal, and engrossed in the bylaw book. Any questions? No? All in favor? Carrie's.
A bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement for electronic voting services with Intellavote Systems, Inc., short way.
Missing, missing information here, but I see a, a motion here to accept a conservation authority's draft budget.
Yes, so at the last meeting, it was requested that Councilor Fancy obtain further information, so because it was tabled, it's brought back on every agenda until the motion has been dealt with.
All.
I have, uh, put in a request for further information, and it will be dealt with at our December 3rd meeting, I've asked for it, though, not, not hours here, but there, um, the, um, they, they are putting, we are not the only municipality asking for explanations, so there, our staff is working on it, so as soon as I have a response, I will get it to you.
Thanks, Margaret.
Okay.
In, in the meantime, we just keep tabling this until it comes?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of tabling, okay.
I can just remind council at the next meeting that it will be tabled till the second meeting in December.
Right, okay.
No pressure, I won't, I won't put too much pressure on the staff there, I know that they're, they're getting questions from all the participating municipalities, or many of them.
What a surprise. Okay, we got a request from the Children's Mental Health of Leeds and Granville for a donation. Um, had we given them donations before, do you know?
Through Making Play Possible, but they don't, I, I don't, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, so Children's Mental Health does. Yes, so Children's Mental Health does not run Making Play Possible anymore. So I don't think there's been one directly from the agency, other than through Making Play Possible, yeah.
We do, Sheri, Jennifer prepared the, our donation and grant budget, and we have a little bit left in it. So if we're in agreement to give them $250, that's okay? Yes.
Yeah, because they're, they're seeing, as their letter explained, they're seeing more and more basic needs not being addressed, and that's, they're having to fill that role. And that's not something that government covers in a budget, so.
So we can reach their, max their, the request, 250? Yeah, okay, thanks, Jennifer. Okay, so moved by Margaret Fancy, second by Carson Massey, the council agree to donate $250 to Children's Mental Health of Leeds and Granville. All in favor? Kerry's. Let me get on the right page here, Gail, don't yell at me. I have to get my agenda on the right page here. I shouldn't say, you don't yell at me, you just remind me. Okay, resolutions, moved by Gail Williams, second by Carson Massey, the council endorsed a resolution of the town of Plimpton, Wyoming. That's in Canada, right? Okay. No. Regarding conservation authority financing. I'm sure we asked them, they never heard of Front of Young either, so. All right, we talked about this last time. All in favor? Kerry's. We have, we have, our challenge is having people spell Young properly. Okay. Communications, anything? No? Announcements? Margaret, you got a fancy basket there, you got it?
I, I do. This is from, well, the project of, of the Business Networking Committee, which is linked to our Economic Development Committee. We've had, 12 of our local businesses have gone together to create a Christmas basket, which is selling for $30, and it has a retail value of about $70. So they're doing this really to promote our local businesses and to tell us to really think about shopping local, local. Some great items and great donations, and we hope that the community will respond by purchasing some baskets. And so they can reach out to myself on, from the Economic Development Committee. Or, well, I guess I will list all the names there. If they reach out to me, I can make sure that they, they get a basket, so.
Where, can you purchase them?
Well, there will be available, we can order them through the library. They're going to have an order form. There'll be an order form at the Legion, and I'm, I'm sure that, yeah, at, at the township office. Or they can just contact one of us, and we'll deliver to them, yeah. But they're, as I say, they're great quality and a great way of supporting local business.
Good, good. Any other announcements? Carson?
Just like to remind everybody, on December the 20th, we have our tree lighting services here at 6:00 PM. So come on in for hot chocolate cookies and some caroling, and watch the mayor turn on the lights again this year.
And the parade is next Saturday, right?
The 29th at 6:00 PM, yes.
Twenty, yeah, next Saturday.
And this year, registration for the parade will be at the rec park.
Yeah, I just mentioned the parade, because we're not having another council meeting before the parade. Okay, any other announcements? No? Notice is a motion? None? Public, are there any questions? Contact Jennifer tomorrow. We don't have any in-camera session. And 17 is confirmatory bylaw. So moved by Carson Massey, second by Gail Williams, that a bylaw number 48-25 being a law, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings with the council. That the township of Front of Young, in its regular meeting held on November the 3rd, 25, be adopted and passed, sealed with a corporate seal, and be recorded. All in favor? Kerry's. And moved by Margaret Fancy, second by Carson Massey, the council adjourned to meet again December the 1st for the committee, the whole public works meeting at 6 o'clock, followed by the regular meeting of council at 6:30, or the call of the mayor. All in favor? Kerry's. We are adjourned and flick the switch.